All right. Good evening, welcome to the, I can't get today's date right, March 12th, 2019, meeting of the Manchester Town Council. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, and with this liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. No more public hearings tonight, right? We finally got the other issue out of the way after three months. We do have two council people that weren't able to make it tonight, but we do have a quorum, so we'll conduct our regular business meeting. First order of business, approval of January 23rd minutes and the February 12th minutes. You should have a copy of these, I know Kelly sent, the most recent one's out pretty early this month, so everybody should have a copy, a chance to review. Any additions or corrections? We'll approve these separately, probably more appropriate. So, we have any additions or corrections to January 23rd minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the January 23rd minutes as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then the February 12th minutes?
I make a motion, we accept the February 12th minutes as printed.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we have January 2019 Treasury Report, we have a check registered last month. We have a motion to receive the Treasury Report from January.
I'll make the motion that we receive the January 2019 Treasury Report.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have the check register for February, we have a motion to receive that check register.
I'll make a motion, we receive the February 2019 check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, except for housekeeping, mayor's report, we do have some items this month. This Saturday, March 16th, at the high school, the Business Expo, this is a couple of years in now, it's gotta be at least the third year, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I believe we'll have two tables, the town, well, we have a town table, and then we have a Manchester Police Department table as well. I know there's a ton of other tables around, from the community, from the business community, so it's a good opportunity to stop up and see some of the things going on, and of course, you know, meet some of the other people in town, new and old. We have a special limb pickup, March 26th, so the town is adding this special brush and tree limb pickup from the debris that fell from the past winter, so I'm sure everybody's yard's all full of sticks, so if we can kinda get those things together, we're adding this one to provide that service here to the citizens, although just a couple of rules here. Brush will, get it out by seven in the morning the day of the pickup on March 26th, place all brushing limbs toward the curb, don't put them in a bag or container, and the pile shouldn't be bigger than four feet in height, the item's four inches in width and eight feet in length, again, helps our guys efficiently get that loaded up. We have yard waste pickup, will begin on Friday, April 5th, and then continue through November. As a reminder, yard waste consists of grass clippings, leaves, small branches, not in excess of three feet or four inches in diameter, branches must be bundled in armful loads, yard waste should not be mixed with anything like mulch, dirt, trash, pet waste, that sort of thing, and then place the yard waste in curbside Thursday evening for Friday pickup, so you don't miss it, the guys can start it pretty early on that. All yard waste should be placed in large craft paper bags or in a container to be dumped, not in plastic bags or trash bags. We have an election coming up, the mayor position and two council members will be elected, the term is for four years, we have flyers on the back tonight, so if anybody here is interested in running, there'll be information back there, of course, the information will be available on the town website, we'll push it out on the town Facebook page, that sort of thing. The deadline to file is Monday, April 1st, and the election is Tuesday, May 21st. First Annual Easter Egg Scramble, so some of these things are mixed in with things that Deb made normally, Councilwoman Howe would normally say, but she wasn't able to make it, so from 11, Saturday, April 6th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at Christmas Tree Park, the event will be held immediately after the Fire Department Breakfast with the Easter Bunny, it's rain or shine, and this is organized by the newly formed Manchester Planning and Events Committee. Brush pickup, April 16th, so we have a lot of these things going on, remember, it's the same rules, but that's with the brush pickup. Bulk trash is April 17th, remember to call Hughes Trash Removal, they may have special instructions, something like refrigerator or other large item. Office will be closed on April 19th, and then if any of the young folks here from the high school are interested in applying for the Charlotte Collette Memorial Scholarship, those applications are due May 1st. We probably need to confirm up here, our group, but we'll review those again, but I know every, I've done it for several years, I know Netherdale's done it several times, we always have some really outstanding students, so hopefully we get some good applications for that, and we're able to provide some scholarship help to some of the local students that have been working in the community. There's a couple more items here, we do have an action item, you should have a letter, I don't think they were handed out, neither in your mailbox or handed out, this is a yearly permission for Mr. Collett Rider to spray adjacent to town. Most, we've done this every year, I think most of you are aware of this, so this does require a motion and a vote to provide that authority, does anybody have a chance to review that or familiar with the issue? We have a motion to allow Mr. Collett Rider to spray.
I'll make a motion, we allow Mr. Collett Rider to spray on the property that he rents adjacent to town.
I will second that.
Motion in the second, any other discussion, questions? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Couple other just things are going on, we do have Maryland Municipal League Dinner this Thursday, I'll be attending that along with a couple of other council members here in Union Bridge, it is this Thursday, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Additionally, I'll be speaking to the fourth grade class at Ebb Valley, it's part of the If I Were Mayor contest, we've done that several years in a row, it's one of the things that we try to do, we did have a winner last year, or a regional winner from the schools, that was interesting, that was our first time having somebody advance that far with their essay, so I will report back and hopefully we have a winner. If not, either way, this time, I'd like to invite a couple of the kids to come in, you know, maybe next month or the month after, and present their topics or read their essay. I don't know if anyone here's ever sat on the judging committee, but it's interesting and it's refreshing to hear a fourth grader's perspective. All right, one final item here, is Ms. Carol Miller here? Mike, I gotta, Kelly, you gave it to me, didn't you?
Yeah, that tote.
I just misplaced it.
Do you need a vote? Do I have to get a vote?
I got it. All right. If you don't mind coming up, so we can swear you in.
Mayor, you need a vote.
Oh.
And then you can, then you can swear.
Don't go too far, though, I feel pretty good. Thank you for correcting me. We had one member of the Board of Elections, Board of Supervisors of Elections that is not able to participate, so we do need to turn this position around pretty quickly and get somebody in place, we have an election coming up here right around the corner. Do we have a motion to approve Ms. Carol Miller as a member of the Board of Elections Supervisors? Board of Supervisors of the Elections?
I'll make a motion, we approve Ms. Carol Miller to the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in the second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it is a funny sounding board, just the name. All right, now, sorry for breaking up for you, so if you mind raising your hand, state your name, and then say I do at the end. Aye.
Aye, Carol Miller.
To affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland, and will support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Board of Supervisors of Elections, member, according to the Constitution and laws of the state.
I will.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your. If you don't mind bringing this over, please, Ms. Baldwin, and you guys can sign that.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll all turn it over to the town administrator.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council members of the community, we'll go ahead and review the February 2019 Administrative Report. Under Pending Items, the M dot S H A projects, mayor and council were all copied on March 5th, corresponds to District 7 Engineer John Concanon, and this is in reference to Route 27 and Route 30 project. The Sheets project, that's moving forward, we have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow with the general contractor, staff will be meeting them to go over some items. I'm not going to mention when the store will close, because every time I do, I jinx the project, so, but it's going to be closing in the very, very near future, so you'll see it when they close, of course. The Packaged Goods Store, concerns with, there are concerns with regards to the exterior design and structure, town staff, planning zoning board, the owner, town attorney, and also the architect are working through these issues. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there is a special meeting tomorrow night of the Planning and Zoning Board to discuss these issues, so you'll hear more in the very near future in regards to that. You also should have received a letter in your mailbox, this was in reference to Mr. Covington and his request to lease property, Mr. Covington's here this evening, so he may want to speak on that a little bit later in the evening. Also, I supplied you information from staff in regards to the former MPD building and the Tree of Friends Foundation, which that will probably be coming up later on this evening also. Town staff and legal, we have begun work on the updates for the town charter and code, we've done two chapters already, we're trying to fine tune them before you get a chance to look at those, so you can put your input in on that information. Under Code Enforcement and Rental Housing, you have in front of you the monthly code enforcement update. Also, on March 5th, Councilperson Miller, Michelle Wilder and I met with Ms. Danielle Yates, the Bureau Chief of Housing in Carroll County, as well as Mr. Paul Moffett, who is program manager. Our main reason for our meeting was to learn more about the standards and the requirements that the landlords have to meet, and the tenants who receive housing assistance. I actually thought the meeting went very well, it was very informative, and now we can have a better understanding and better communication between the town and the landlords in regards to different issues that may arise. A lot of it bears on the way that the lease is written, and how much, you know, how much authority that landlord does have over their tenants when they are receiving assistance, so that was very good information. Councilperson Miller, I don't know if you'd like to add anything to that?
It was very informative, they were very willing to share different ideas and things and.
That's correct.
Point us in a lot of great directions and give us a lot of information that'll help us in the future.
Correct. Under Miscellaneous Items, I know Mr. Coontz will have, talk a little bit more in detail about this in his report, we did have a meeting with MDE reps on February 28th, and this is in regards to possible upgrade and expansion at our wastewater treatment plant using funds through the bay fee. So now, it looks like the state is actually to the point where a lot of the larger plants, 500,000 gallons and more, have went with the ENR system, and now they're starting to work their way down to the smaller plants, and we wanna make sure Manchester's in the forefront, so we can get there while the money's still there, and reap some of the benefits where our residents have been paying into the bay restoration fee for the last number of years. So, things are going very well, and Mr. Coontz will talk a little bit about that in his report, so. Also, staff is looking into streamlining our water and sewer billing procedures, as well as our water meter reading procedures. Basically, staff's looking at a cost time savings through efficiency. A major item in water and sewer billing is the billing of individual tenants of rental units. If the council approves our recommendations, we would like to look at billing the landlord direct for all the individual units, and our goal is to have this administrative policy approved by you by July 1st. So let me explain a little bit about that. The town, it doesn't take any time for us to read individual meters on an apartment house. What happens is, it does take our time, our staff, to bill the individual tenants that live in those units. We should not be doing that, we should not be a clearinghouse for the landlord. If that's particular residence or building has four units, the landlord gets four water bills, that landlord is responsible for those water bills, he pays the town. Our staff should not have to track down these tenants to pay their water bills, because at the end of the day, we still go back to the landlord or the property owner who's responsible to get the money, that is the responsible person. So we're trying to streamline that in the future, so you'll be hearing that, hopefully we'll get that approved by July 1st. I did receive a request from a resident who lives on Bachman Road, it was a very good request, they were wondering if we could supply benches at the Crossroads Overlook Park. That project is a very good Eagle Scout project. Before we get to that point, as you well know, we are replacing 10 new picnic tables back in Christmas Tree Park. My, our parks supervisor, Dave Brown, came up with a very good idea, if we can salvage several of those picnic tables, we will be able to take those two picnic tables out to the Crossroads Overlook Park until we get an Eagle Scout started with building permanent benches out there. So hopefully, that'll work out for the residents out there. That letter came in from a Catherine Johnson, who lives on Bachman Road, so we're working on that. Also, as the mayor talked about, the Business Expo is this coming Saturday, and that's always a very nice day. And I'm gonna end my report, our thoughts and prayers go out to our maintenance supervisor, Ray White. Unfortunately, Ray's wife Gloria lost her battle with cancer on Saturday, so please keep Ray's family, you know, in your thoughts and prayers. Any questions for me?
I do have one question, I was in the office a few weeks ago, and there was discussion in regards to the hang tags, or as far as people who have not paid their water on time, or they're getting turnoff notices or such, and there was discussion about whether we are going to continue with that for the next quarter, or if we are going to see, if I'm understanding correctly, they were, some residents were getting two, three, possibly four hang tags at their house prior to their shut off, in addition to mailed letters?
Right. If I'm not mistaken, if your water bill is late, there's a door hanger that goes on, I believe a letter follows.
Nope, so the post, postcard goes out?
Mm-hmm.
It's not paid by the 30th, some, sure, the day after.
The actual water bill, yes.
Yeah, then a blue letter goes out, late notice. That's not paid by a particular date, then we do a yellow door tag to say, hey, you know, it's now 45 days, or whatever the case may be, we're coming back in 48 hours to turn your water off. So in the event, they didn't get the postcard, and they didn't get the letter, 'cause our guys don't wanna turn water off, I mean, I know people think, oh, you know, but we'd rather not, so potentially they could have the yellow door tag, and then the orange door tag, which means we've turned it off, so that's how that works.
I missed a step, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, I joined a step there, but yes, that's correct.
Are we gonna, so I'm understanding, we're gonna continue, 'cause it sounded as though we were looking at potentially.
It does, it does save our people, our people time and trouble going out there.
Okay.
Is it a nicety to the residents? Yes, it is, have we heard different things that you are invading my privacy because you hang this door hanger? At the end of the day, you know, it does save our staff time from actually going out there and giving, giving a reminder to the residents. We go over and beyond, we go over and beyond to try to advise those residents to pay their water bill, so.
People have asked if they could pay the water bill when people come to read the meter, 'cause they don't wanna pay for a stamp to mail their check, so we're like, okay, it's interesting. So, at least for the April billing, we will.
Continue?
Okay. And to correct Steve with the thing with the tenant, landlord tenant, it's just, if we give one, a bill, what, if there's five units, we give five bills, 'cause we've read five meters.
Right.
They're gonna go to the landlord, the owner.
Yes.
They can disperse them. We'll take a check from five different places, we're okay with how the money comes in, we don't care about that, just that we don't wanna be their collection agency.
Right. We don't wanna be, yeah, their collection agency, their clearinghouse, I mean, we're doing the landlord's work. I mean, we don't mind reading those meters, it takes a little bit of no time to read those meters, but when you have to track down, you know, and then, then we were criticized, our staff was criticized for setting up a billing, a payment plan with a tenant, and so on and so forth, and it's like, well, you're the owner of the building, you're the owner of property, you're responsible, I'm sorry, so.
I like the idea of billing the landlord, are we current with their addresses, do they keep, do a good job keeping current?
Yes, the landlord's very current, yes.
Addresses.
Can we actually send duplicate bills, we'll send one to the actual property owner as well as the tenant?
Going to tenant.
If they've come in and made those arrangements with us, and we're aware of it, so.
Hey Steve, with the Crossroads Overlook Park, is that request that came in from one resident, or is there a group of people that are interested in having benches or?
No, I believe it was just, it just is addressed Catherine A. Johnson and family, 2911 Bachman Road.
The only reason, you know, I say something is like, could be one of these situations where somebody asks for something, and then we say, okay, let's try to work with them, and we do something, and then like, five other people come back and say, wait a minute, now people are sitting out here all night, carving initials and spray painting things, but I guess if it's picnic tables that we're salvaging, we can give it a trial run.
Yeah, we can give it a trial run, right, and they talk about, you know, in Ms. Johnson's letter, she talks about the, you know, the grandparents, you know, along with other grandparents, they'd like to go to the park and watch, and there's nowhere for them to sit.
Yeah.
You know, so I can, I can understand that, so it's a good trial run.
I guess there's already a park there, so if people are gonna hang out and do whatever, they're gonna do it anyway. Okay. Anything else for the town administrator? All right, move on to Public Works Report.
Good evening, mayor and town council, I'd like to bring your attention to the Water and Wastewater Data Report. For the month of February, we treated and pumped eight, 8.3 million gallons of water, with an average of 209,500 gallons per day. At the wastewater treatment plant, we treated 11 million gallons of wastewater, with an average of 309,500 gallons per day. Average temperature, 29 degrees, and precipitation, 1.58 inches. Moving on to the DPW report, can everybody hear me okay, 'cause this mic hasn't been working?
Yep.
Okay, in our water department, we had two leaks on the public side, and they were located and repaired by Manchester staff, and one was a six inch water main leak, and that was at the 2900 block of Park Avenue. The second one was an eight inch water main leak, and that was at 3397 York Street. The first one was repaired on the 7th of February, and the second one was repaired the 15th of February. We also located five water leaks on the private side, and they all have been repaired by residents all through February. Our water meter replacement program is complete for FY19, and we replaced a total of 50 for this year. The Ferry Road Wellhouse Rehab has been completed, and this included painting, building repairs inside and out. Moving on to wastewater, we had one sewer backup on the private side that we located, and that was cleared by the resident, and that was on Maiden Lane, and that was cleared on the 27th of February, February. Also, the South Sewer Pumping Station Rehab has been completed, and this entailed a new bubbler system for the wet well, painting, a new exhaust fan, and also interior, exterior building repairs. And all these repairs are done by field staff, we do as much as we can in-house. For the wastewater treatment plant, we've been working all through February, preparing for the discharge changeover from stream discharge to spray irrigation, this involved pump maintenance, control room preparations, chemical room preparations, painting, stuff like that, changing filters. We actually did the changeover March 1st, and everything's going well. Also, on the, at the wastewater treatment plant, just to build on what Steve brought, Steve explained it very well, but we had a very encouraging meeting with EN, I'm sorry, with MDE on the ENR upgrade for the treatment plant. ENR stands for Enhanced Nutrient Removal, and this will bring us a state-of-the-art facility that will discharge pristine affluent water to meet and exceed MDE stringent standards, they're getting more and more stringent all the time, and this will get us ahead of the game while the funds are still available. That being said, we are moving forward with the RFQ, that's a request for qualifications to bring on engineering firms, qualified engineering firms, to move forward with a study. That's the first step of the process. We had two snow and ice events in February, one was the 1st of February, one was the 11th, and I'm officially calling that it for this year.
Oh gee, we're jinxed now. Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
I think Steve mentioned, we are working on new picnic tables for Christmas Tree Park to replace the ones that have gone bad. And lastly, all DPW staff working really hard through the FY20 budgeting process, and that's it. Any questions on any of that? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thanks Rodney. All right, we'll go over to the chief for the police report.
Yes, sir. So the Manchester Police have responded to 69 calls during the month of February, which is a low call volume. 25 calls were to assist Hamstead and the sheriff deputies. We did criminally charge eight persons during the month. We had two Part One crimes this go around, one Part One, excuse me, one Part One crime involved the armed robbery at Sheets. It was 5:30 in the morning on the 23rd of February, suspect hit the Jiffy Mart down in Hamstead, then once he left the Jiffy Mart down in Hamstead, he came up to the Sheets, he robbed the Sheets, and then he proceeded to head north and go up into Hanover, PA. The officers were able to get a good description out, they were able to look at video footage, and the suspects came out running the radio, so they communicated with Pennsylvania, and then they were able to zone in on the guy, and after a brief car chase, they were able to get him and arrest him. So then Maryland State Police furthered the investigation, it looks like he was wanted for several robberies throughout Maryland and Pennsylvania, guy's been in and out of jail. The second Part One involved a $20,000 larceny out of a home on Augusta Road, that was cash, so that's on our investigation. Then also, unfortunately, the Manchester Volunteer Fire Department also had a $20,000 theft. So we're working with the Maryland State Police on both cases, trying to find out what's going on there. The other crimes during the course of the month were three domestics, no serious injuries, and they've been resolved, hopefully. As a follow-up, if you remember, we had the burglaries that was down in Hamstead, and then they hit the Pipers, and they hit the Marathon Gas Station in Hamstead, then they hit our Manchester Medicines. That suspect is in jail, he's currently, we got him tied up on unrelated charges, and we're waiting for Crime Lab to come back with some results, hopefully to be able to tie him in to the other cases, the burglaries. But he is in jail, and based on those charges, he's gonna be in jail for a while. The arrest included one warrant arrest, four traffic arrests, one domestic assault arrest, M D O P, which is malicious destruction of property, and then two marijuana possession criminal citations. The sheriff's office, they reported 58 overdoses, 22 of which were heroin and fentanyl related. There were six fatalities this go around, that is a pretty high number for a month, and the municipalities account for, Hamstead is two, Manchester until the other night was zero, we now have one, we have one up on Mini Drive, Sykesville is zero, Tawnytown is five, Westminster's 19, and Mount Area's four. We conducted 23 traffic enforcement stops, several citations were issued this go around, along with 42 warnings, and one included a infamous bike rider, dirt bike rider throughout Augusta and Mini, Officer Warburg was able to get him, so he's facing a lot of charges now as well. And that's about it, everything else is good, and we'll see you Saturday at the Expo.
I had a couple of questions, chief, so the two $20,000 thefts, are those two separate Part One crimes, or is it one at this point, or they?
We're looking at them as separate, but of course, we're always looking for possible connections, because there is a connection between the complainants.
So there, so there could be.
For lack of better words.
If they wanted to be separate things, if they're different, then it'd be.
Yes.
An additional Part One crime, I guess.
Yes.
The second thing, just recently, past a day or so, I got contacted. The, the second thing, just recently, past a day or so, I got contacted by some folks in crossroads. I guess we've switched from daylight savings times, now darker at the bus stops. So as the folks stand around at the bus stops, we're getting like the, again, like, hey, can we get some early enforcement around the, the stop signs where the, where the bus? And I'm sure that's across all neighborhoods, but it just happened to be some crossroads folks that contacted me. Anything else for the chief?
Real quick now, I guess we're talking about probably the four-way Westminster Bachman through here.
Yeah, that's like one of the, the standards.
Down Keating.
And the, the Keating and Westminster one.
Okay.
Yeah. And then if, if anybody here, anybody's listening has, you know, an intersection or a bus stop that, that could use some, some, some attention, let us know. Cause sometimes we can't be everywhere, but we, we're always looking to, to get somebody to a spot that's a, that's a hot zone for where the stuff's going on. All right. This is not on the agenda, this was, this was a late ad, but I know the, the talk group is, is back. We're down two people and we've had a couple month conversation. Couple of us were just chatting here before we started. Rather than kind of get into a, you know, a numbers like horse trading, like, you know, who's, where everybody's at. But what I think, and if, if this group's open to it and if your group's open to it, is maybe, it seems like there's momentum to say, hey, we'd like to find a way to work with you. If you are stunted and, and working with us, I know you guys are looking at some other options. Is get, get a group with, with the administrator and the finance director, me and a couple of council people and then let, let's sit at the table. And, and just have a discussion about like, like, here's what we think we can do and here's how that builds up. Can you do this and what are your needs? And that way, it's not sort of like a, it's, it's not the same form, we can sit like at the table in the back. Would, would you guys, would be open to that rather than, and that way, we could, we could kind of work together to see if we can, rather than kind of meet every month and then, you know. Try to count votes or something. I think that may be a collaborative way to, to get everybody to one table to see if we can, if we can find some common ground here to, to help you guys out. So I know this is kind of like, like last minute in terms of an idea, but Dale and I were talking and we were talking before we got started, so.
That's right.
Um, I don't know if we need a vote to do that. Maybe what we'll do is, are you guys okay with that?
Sure.
And, and then let's look at some dates over, I know we, we gotta get going here, like over the next week or so. Like, like an evening, and we can get started even a little bit earlier in the evening, six, six-thirty if people can make it. Sit down, plan out two hours or something and try to get something done. Sound like a plan? All right, I, I, I know Melinda's interested, I know, I know Deb's interested too and, you know. You know, no, no one's walled off from coming and talking, but that way, we can sit down and just, just let's just hammer it out and be done. Okay, so we'll, um. Oh, okay, yeah, do you wanna, um, you guys call in and we can just look, look for some dates and times?
Oh, I would, um, the rest of March, I'm really busy right now, but I was throwing out, how about Monday night at six-thirty here? I mean, I'm just, no?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Next Monday.
Well, let's go with it. This coming Monday night, I don't know what the date is.
Let's say eighteen.
Six, six-thirty here.
Six-thirty work for everybody?
Yeah.
All right, Monday the eighteenth, six-thirty here, we'll, we'll get the table set up in the back. And, uh, we'll go from there.
That'll work.
Okay.
That was quick enough.
All right, so we have one person that's signed in and we'll get to anybody else who wants to speak afterward. Mr. Tom Smith. Oh, there he is.
Tom Smith, I live here in Manchester. I'd like to direct these first questions to the police chief Hess, if I may.
You can ask any question you like.
Why is it that in Carroll County, Manchester has more complaints filed against the Manchester Police Department than any other department in the county?
You'll have to tell me who's filing the complaints because for this date, right now, we have zero.
Well, you'll have to get.
Complaint, hear me out, we had two complaints last year, so I'm really not sure what you're talking about.
Well, according to those that I spoke with from Sheriff's Department, they get more complaints about the Manchester Police Department than any other police department in the county.
Who'd you speak to in the Sheriff's Department?
There were three of them that actually told me that.
Who's the three?
I don't know their names.
Are they deputies, are they bosses, are they at the desk?
There were a combination, and that's why I can tell you, I don't know exactly what their position was.
So it'll be okay for me to follow up with the sheriff, Jimmy Dewey's?
You can, you can talk.
Cause you're bringing new knowledge to the table, I'm not aware of that.
Because when it first happened and when I told them what had happened and, cause I was involved with, as a witness to a crime. And when they showed up, I told them, I said, I didn't want to talk to Manchester Police Department. And their first word was, when I told them that, is that, well, we get those complaints all the time.
Is that when you found the marijuana? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
That was long before that.
Oh, okay, I'm not, I'm not aware of that either.
But then about the marijuana, that was another time.
Okay.
So that was two different times and two, different police, different officers.
I'll follow up for you.
But I found that, but I was told that, that Manchester Police Department has more complaints filed to the Carroll County Police Department, about the Manchester Police Department.
So just to be clear, it was a combo of deputies and bosses for the sheriff's office?
Right.
When?
First time was, I believe it was in August of last year.
August two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the next time was about when the marijuana plants and that was.
That was last year too?
That was also last year.
Okay.
And that was.
So we talked about that the last time you were in here, has something happened after that?
No, I did not. No, I did not.
No?
Because I was cut off before I got to that.
Okay.
And told to leave, basically, I heard enough.
I'll walk into it, sir.
So, and I know that in the past, I've had that same problem with Manchester Police Department and I've heard plenty of other complaints myself from people. There was another, there was a gentleman last fall that came here, or to your office here, trying to find someone. No one was here, at least no one answered the door. He went downtown at a couple of different places that were open, asking if they knew where they could find the police and they said, no. He stopped at the old police station thinking that maybe somebody was there and he stopped in another place. And they finally told him, you're better off calling the Sheriff's Department. That was their words to this gentleman.
Okay.
So it, it's just not me knowing about it, it certainly goes on.
Right.
And like I say, it's happened to me more than once over the last several years.
So to clear that matter up, what I would say and for anybody else listening, Carroll County doesn't have a non-emergency number. So don't hesitate to ever call nine-one-one and that's even just a simply to meet a police officer at the station. Number two, I'll tell it as a chief, I don't like my officers hanging in the station, I prefer than to be out in the community. So if you need somebody, call nine-one-one, even if you want to just meet us up here to talk, the dispatchers completely understand. Carroll County law enforcement is spread thin, a lot of times Manchester could be in Hamstead, Manchester could be in Westminster. There's a lot that goes on in the county and we work as one, we operate as one team. There's memorandum, memorandum of understandings that cover that. So no, Mr. Smith, we're not gonna be hanging in the station.
Well, actually, sometimes when you're in the station, at least in the past, you haven't come to the door.
I find that hard to believe, but I, I'll, I'll talk to you about it, we can talk afterwards.
There was one person that worked in this office from time to time, part-time. And it happened to that person one time and they knew somebody was in it. Twice I came up to the office when it was down below.
Right.
And twice that happened to me, but I was already aware of the, that they didn't always come to the door and I knocked several times over several minutes. The one case was two or three times before somebody came.
Right.
And there was at least two people in there. The other time was after I got a phone call from you about coming up and picking up an article that you had, that I requested problems with. And you even called me and I said I'd be up in like fifteen, twenty minutes, which it was. And it took me five or ten minutes to get somebody to come to the door and there were at least three officers in there at that time.
That's okay.
So, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Smith, do you have a, a question?
Well, the question was about him, or Mr. or Chief Hess, about the problems with trying to get in touch with, and the complaints about the police department.
I think the chief said he'll, he'll look into the complaints, I think that's new to us with the getting in touch with people. I mean, I, I don't mean to cut you off if you have something to say, but you're kind of just telling very general stories about one time and another time.
They're not general stor- stories, it's something that goes on in this town on a regular basis. And these are just a few of the instances I brought up.
So what I would say to you, Mr. Smith, we're very transparent, if you go onto the website, there's a complete, uh, form on there, how to file a complaint. And you don't necessarily have to file a complaint with me. You can reach out to the Maryland State Police, you can reach out to Carroll County sheriffs, you can reach out to Howard County, or, or, or Hamstead. You can reach out to Howard County, you can, you got your rights to make a complaint. If you don't wish me, for me to do the investigation, you can request that one of those other agencies do the investigation. We're not gonna just sidebar you with a complaint, we take them serious.
Well, there's one reason why I brought that here tonight, cause I want everybody else to know what goes on in Manchester. They don't know anything, what goes on until people come in and talk about it. And then when they get tired of hearing it, they just tell the people to leave, it's enough, like I was done with me last time.
Okay.
And the last time, the biggest reason I was here last time is because when your officers got involved in telling lies about my wife. That was what got me ticked off more than anything. And that's the kind of stuff that residents in Manchester put up with. And you guys don't know anything about it because they're not allowed to tell anything and most residents don't want to talk about it. And I'm not afraid to talk about it. Because if I'd be cut off tonight, my decision was, if I wouldn't be heard, to go to the papers. And then you could read about it in the papers. Now, I don't want to go to the papers, I like to get my fill in. Because, like I say, you don't know what happens until people come here and complain. And if it's something that you don't want to hear about, that doesn't happen in your little neighborhoods, that happens townwide, you don't want to hear about it.
I, I think what we're asking, I, I haven't cut you off and I think last time you talked for a good while, is if you have something you'd like to say, you're allowed to say it. But then let's, let's say it and then move on.
The last time you cut me off, not because I spoke too long and that's what I asked about, because others spoke longer. You said I should take that, my problem somewhere else.
It's probably recorded, I'd be surprised if I said something as direct as that.
Check, I dare you to go back and check.
Okay.
And you told me three times before I quieted down and then two others stood up in your defense, told me to take it elsewhere, they didn't want to hear it.
Do you have something you'd like to say tonight?
Yeah. The officers of Manchester treated myself and my wife wrongly. Put our name out there as criminals, or my name out there as criminal, for the whole world to see. When they couldn't find a bit of evidence saying that I had anything to do with the crime that they, somebody pointed a finger at. They had no evidence. After I talked to you in May, uh, uh, in April of last year, I, I tried to get in touch with that place that, business. About filing complaints and they said, well, they, you can't file it here, you have to file it with their corporate headquarters. I called their corporate headquarters and told them what the complaint was, they told me that they couldn't handle it through that office, they'd have to hand it to their lawyers. And when I called their lawyers, they thought I was totally wrong because they didn't have any evidence of it. And I read it right off the criminal report, the address, the store, the date and everything. And they said that was very strange that they have no record of it.
So again, I think I did say something to this effect last time, I'm not involved with, with a criminal case. I'm not the expert in a criminal case, I don't review evidence, I don't prepare charging documents. Our job is, as a legislative body, and then my job as mayor is not to do that.
You're exactly right.
If you have a complaint about how you're treated, I think the chief provided there's an outlet for that. There's a process, we're more than happy to point you in the right direction of how to do that. But there's, there's nothing that we can do if your complaint is with the police.
My complaint is more so not the police at this time, it's both from you and the chair people. Because you don't want to hear it, you don't want to know what goes on in your town if it doesn't concern you.
Well, I respectfully disagree, I think everything concerns us. And that's why I've asked you, if you have a complaint, then state your complaint and then, and then let's move on.
Well, my complaint is against the police department for the way they handle things. It's against you people sitting up here because you don't get involved, you don't want to know what goes on. And when something goes on, you just tell me to go out the door.
Mr. Smith, I can assure you that we want to know what's going on and we're happy to hear anything from anybody. The only thing we do hear is constant glowing accolades about the police department. So, and, and we want to hear more. Police feel free anytime, we, we do want to hear that, we do care.
That's because most people don't want to put out whatever the police department charged them with. When this started, I went to my, a few of the people in our, right around us, a few of our neighbors and told them what was going on. And a couple of them told me that the same thing actually happened to them. They were charged with something they did not do, they had to spend for lawyers to, uh, expunge it off the record. The one guy didn't do that, it was on his rec, had a rec, that on his, it was listed for three mon, or three years before it actually came off. Because he didn't go with the lawyers. Because of their inconsideration and not doing the job right, it cost me thousands of dollars last year. Myself and wife, under a lot of stress. Now, we put in, in the last few years, over six hundred hours of volunteer work for the town in different areas. Now, last year, when this happened, we both stopped, dropped way off with hours for a while. My wife picked back up on some of her hours, but I still am not picking, doing all the hours that I normally put in. Way down, just because of the actions that the residents and myself get from the police department and from the town. There's, there's no responsibility taken on your part for looking out for the residents. You pick and choose who you want to hear from and who you want to help. And you might only hear it from me, but I guarantee you, there's a whole lot of people that feel the same as I do.
Mr. Smith, listen, I can assure you, none of us feel that way and this is what I can promise you. If you sit down, I'm very familiar with your case, I can't speak for the complainant because I have no control over that person or that company. But what I can assure you is I will sit down with you, I will take a full written statement from you and I'll ask the Maryland State Police to look into your case.
Why don't you ask the other two officers that questioned me that night about all the lies that they put up?
Sir, I'm trying to give you how to make a complaint, we can sit down and do that.
No, because I know with the kind of stuff that I've seen from the police department, it's not gonna work the way you say it is.
All right, so this is not the forum, this is to debate a criminal case, so do you, do you have anything else or?
The only thing I'm gonna say is that I hope that all of you start to wise up and help the residents of this town. Not only the police department, but the ones sitting here on the board.
Well, Mr. Smith, are you alleging that the Maryland State Police will be participating in this cover-up of whatever you're reporting?
I'm not saying a word about the Maryland State Police.
Well, the chief Hess has offered to take a statement from you and pass it on to the Maryland State Police for appropriate investigation.
You heard what I said about.
I did hear what you said and that's why I'm asking you, are you alleging that the Maryland State Police will be in collusion with the Manchester Police Department?
I did not say that.
I'm asking.
What are you asking?
I'm asking, are you alleging that?
No, I said not.
Because Chief Hess offered to turn this whole investigation over to the Maryland State Police to help accommodate your concerns.
He heard me, you heard me, he could do it without me saying anything else, he could look into it.
Very good.
And if you want to talk to somebody, you talk to the two police officers that questioned me that night and ask them what he told, all the lies about myself and about my wife. Now, if anybody knows anything about the police department, say, good for lying, great for lying.
I resent that, I was a Baltimore City Police Officer for twenty-five years and served this Carroll County for over seven years. Now, there may be individual deputies and officers that do do that, but to collectively paint everybody like that is wrong.
I'm not saying everybody, I didn't say the word everybody. But I know there's an awful lot to do. But I know there's an awful lot to do, and I've heard it personally from them. From the state police, down city police, county police, and town police.
Chief, since you've been here, do we have any documented cases of our police lying?
No, sir.
Yeah, I, I think-
Didn't you say the police have the right to lie, except in court?
Did, did I say what?
You said that the police have the right to lie, except in court.
I said to you, a police officer doing an undercover operation has the right to play the part just like any other actor. But when it comes time to the court of law, they must tell the truth.
Well, isn't that just what I said?
You can perceive that how you wish. I, I don't know what else to tell you.
Well-
All right. Mr. Smith, is, again, this is a time for questions and comments. I thi, I think if, I think you've, you've stated you have a problem with the police. If, if you have a problem with the case of the police, I wa, I would encourage you to take the path, go to the Maryland State Police. We're happy to, to help out. But it, it's not productive here just to have an ongoing argument.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, the police department owes myself and my wife an apology, and so does mayor and council.
Okay.
Okay.
Point taken.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Do you mind coming up?
As a counterpoint to that, I'd just like to say that the people in Castlefield have a wonderful relationship with the police department, have had nothing but good relations with them. And the town council, in my opinion, in my experiences, have been very responsive to every complaint.
Thank you. Do you mind coming up?
I just wanted to say that I live across the street, and nothing makes me happier than looking out my kitchen window and seeing your guy standing there. Thank you.
Anybody else before we move on? Did you, did you want to discuss anything tonight?
Uh, yes.
I, I saw you said, we're not on the agenda? I don't, that's, but I saw, I assumed you wanted to say something, so. Do you mind, do you mind coming up, though, Smiths?
So, I'm Gordon Covington. I was here last month, um, proposing to lease the old skate park ground. Um, so I just got a letter in the mail, and I guess you guys all got the same one, that you were, um, going to deny my request. And the, you know, the, the reason cited was that there was the issue with the Maryland DOT owning a portion of the skate park. So, um, my question was, if I wa, was to be able to overcome that, like, either with like a written agreement from the DOT or something, would this be something that you would, like, do a trial run on? Like, I, I was asking for like a twelve-month, you know, lease where you could agree, you know, and, and rescind the lease if you didn't want to do it after a twelve-month period? Or am I wasting my time to try to pursue this?
Um, uh, um, at the, at the risk of speaking for everybody here, I think the way that that letter is worded is when the conversation started is, when we looked at it and you, you made a proposal, okay, let's, let's, you know, really consider this and, and see if it makes sense for the town, and if it's, if it's logistically something that we can do. And we got to the point where Mr. Miller sent something out, and he said, oh, look, well, the way this is cut out here, and we have like this rectangular piece that's not even owned by us. So, at that point, it's a deal breaker. So, I, I don't want to send you down a path that says, yes, if you could cross that hurdle, then all the rest of the hurdles are out of the way. I think when we got to that one, we just kind of stopped. The, the big thing in, in my mind, and I'm not speaking for everybody here, is just the ingress egress and whether or not it would work at that site to, to get things in, in and out, and, and who owns what, and what the right-of-ways look like.
Right.
Um, so that, that would be, I guess, my advice. It's not a, a definitive, this could never happen, no way, not, not on the table. I think the way the town's position was, when we got to the point of saying, we don't own the piece of land that we're talking about, that it just ceased, and that letter went out.
Right. So, I mean, if this is just the first in a series of hurdles, tell me how high, and I'll start jumping, you know, and I'll, I mean, I can do the legwork and work through this kind of stuff if, you know, at the end of the tu, you know, if there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Like, saying if I was to overcome every obstacle, um, so that this would be something that could happen, is, has, has the council already made up its mind that this, that you're not going to lease the land, no matter, you know, what the circumstance?
I, I would say there's probably a list, and just to be fair, there's, there's a list of hurdles. I don't want to say that the council would never agree to it. I would say that's, it's probably not a high probability, um, given the list of hurdles, if for no other reason.
Right.
Um, if you wanted a list of those hurdles, or a, a rough list, right, back-of-the-napkin kind of thing, I think we are with, in conjunction with Steve, we, we could put something together and say, this is what, this is the reasons why we see this is not, um, ideal, or these are the things that would be problematic.
Right.
And then maybe just have like an offline discussion about that. I, but I don't want to say it's, you know, no way, no how. Would anybody here consider it? And you guys could speak up, or, but I don't want to give you like a, hey, if we cross one hurdle, then there's definitely a light at the end of the tunnel.
I understand it, because I've been through this process. I've, I've worked out of several different locations before in Baltimore County, and I had to get zoning variances and all this kind of stuff. So, I'm used to the process. I've gone through red tape. You know, I've made it work. Um, so that's something that I'm willing to spend my time and effort on doing so that you guys don't have to do. So, I mean, if, if we could do that, come up with a list of like, these are all the things that would have to get accomplished before it could be a possibility. I could start working on that list.
That's a good way to put it, like, before it'd be a possibility.
Right.
I, I think the second thing, and, and I hate to give anybody another chore here, but there, there may be people, um, either Steve or, or, Dale's been on planning and zoning, and we just went through a comprehensive, the comprehensive plan, that may be able to say, hey, have you considered these two or three other possible locations that are, that are in or around town that may also work?
Right.
Right? So, there's, there's a lot of years of experience here of knowing what's there.
Right.
So, maybe you just aren't aware, but that maybe is another way we can help out.
Okay. I just didn't want this to be completely forgotten until I had sort of exhausted every option, so.
Is that, is that, is everybody?
Yeah, Gordon, I think the, the biggest hurdle, um, well, first of all, I, I don't know. I don't know how the skate park flew under the radar with nobody picking up on it, that it was actually half on S H A property. The way this came about was when we were working on the stormwater management facility for the skate park property, which of course was turned down, and we found out, you know, that, hey, you know, half your skate park was on S H A property. I think that creates a prob, as the mayor said, I really do think a big hurdle is, is getting state highways to agree to use that entrance as, you know, ingress and egress coming out onto Route twenty-seven. Um, that could be a problem. Uh, one of the issues that came up in conversation with the council, uh, about saving, or saving that property and look into turning it back into, uh, a park like it was before, West Side Memorial Park. We actually did some research on that, and how did West Side Memorial Park come to be? Who is it in memory of? So, you know, that's, that's another issue that, that, you know, we looked into. So, there are multiple issues, but I, my gut feeling is the big issue of the state highway right-of-way and owning that piece of property. That's my, my gut feeling, so. Maybe it's worth your time and trouble to write a letter to District Seven and see what the district says. And see what the district engineer says, and, you know. Uh, I did some research on that entrance. Why such an elaborate entrance? You know, at the time it was built, back in the mid-sixties, why such an elaborate entrance leading to actually nowhere?
Right.
And I can't get any answers on that. Uh, we did find out that there was, way back when, there was a nice picnic grove down in that general area, so. But I can't see S H A putting in such a nice entrance at the time, and, you know, just to lead to a picnic area, so. But, uh, that, that would be my recommendation that your first step is to talk to the District Seven engineer and get their feelings on it.
Right.
So.
So, like, without, so the town of Manchester can still use that property even though it is the part of the state highway?
Well, it looked like it was ingress and egress to our water supply, which our water supply was down, uh, we had spring areas down, down off of Route twenty-seven.
Right.
And, and if that's the way it's set up, just to gain access for the water supply, that could be a problem. Right.
Okay. So, it's the fact, it's, it's not you guys using the land that's an issue. It's if you were to decide to lease the land to a third party, is where the issue comes up with the DOT.
That's correct. And, you know, then we have to look into, as I said before, uh, the, the West Side Memorial Park. And, and, you know, can it only be used as a park? I can't, I, I, we have to do some research on that, so.
Okay.
And we can't, again, we can't, we can't find anything in the minutes or the records that show, you know, how this became West Side Memorial Park.
So, a, an example maybe, um, like, take something that's like not our property, right? So, like, maybe the area up here where, where Roar Boss Bus has been. If a new business came in and said they want to operate a business, they want to purchase that tract of land, they're going to operate that business, it's either something similar or something different, they're going to have to go through the same process with permitting to make sure, and then they're coming out onto a state road, so they still have to get the ingress and egress approved, even though it was something that was there before and was being used. So, if you want to put like a shopping center in there, or something like doctor's office, or-
So, whenever you change the type of usage, you have to get that approved?
Yeah, we don't control that solely because of it being a state road.
So, if it stays what it is now, or as a type of park, then you don't have to do that whole process with the DOT?
That's my understanding.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah, and I think that the way that the pad was there, we just, I don't remember. Or we, we don't really know how it got onto S H A land. It was just-
We really don't.
Yeah.
And to tell you the truth, uh, we always assumed that, you know, the stream, we assumed, the stream was the boundary line.
Yeah.
But there was a little piece-
I saw it. It was on that, that paper I gave you guys where it shows a little rectangle coming out, right where the, the, the culvert goes under twenty-seven.
And I'm thinking that state highway, in their, uh, in their, in theory, they wanted more of a right-of-way if they wanted to expand that, that drainage pipe across the stream. That's what I'm assuming, so.
Okay.
But before all of our times. Yes.
Okay.
Correct. That was in the mid-sixties, right?
Even before your time.
Uh, it, we just, I was two.
Yeah.
I was working for the town.
Yeah.
And please know, we didn't just say absolutely not. The, the staff, especially Stephen Kelly, have spent a lot of time investigating this. And I personally, when I saw the state highway, square, rectangle, for lack of a better word, on the map, I went, well, that's, in my mind, it was kind of a done-for, because I think it's going to be a challenge. Not, uh, no, definitely you can't do it, but it's going to be, uh, a lot of work.
Right. Well, I really appreciate you guys spending your time on it, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else before we move on? All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Councilwoman Miller.
Okay, uh, two things. I have the Banner City application almost complete. I'm taking it with us Thursday night to get signed. And you did say earlier, the one last thing that we have to do is visiting the schools in April, so I'll have that ready to be signed.
I'll be there Thursday.
Yep, and we'll get that taken care of. Um, and the second thing is, I spoke a couple months ago about a collaboration between the fire department, the town of Manchester, and Haley's Wish, doing a Bag Bingo fundraiser to raise funds for more inclusive, um, pathways in the playground, as well as an inclusive sway, or, excuse me, slide. Um, that event is planned for Friday, August twenty-third. Um, we're in the process of preparing the permit application and that kind of thing. Information will be coming out. We are looking for, um, families, residents, businesses that'd be willing to sponsor, fill, stuff, door prizes, those kind of things, to be able to help us out, to hopefully raise enough funds to be able to get the rubberized pathway to the equipment.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I want to, uh, say thank you to Councilperson Miller. Our office, um, our office staff will be attending this White's funeral tomorrow. And, uh, Councilperson Miller and Jackson Miller will be answering the phone and answering the door for us for several hours while our staff is attending the funeral. So, thank you very much.
So, if you hear screaming in the background, it's not me.
That's fine. It happens all the time, so.
You might have to get a headset for him, because he's not going to be able to hold that phone.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
All right, Councilwoman Shelley.
As has been previously mentioned, the Business Expo is this Saturday the sixteenth, from nine AM to two PM. There are eighty-five vendors. Uh, I think it's a great event. I've been able to make it to the last two. The next MAMA meeting will be March twenty-first at Dutch Corner. And Guy, did you make it to the Print House Networking Event?
I did. It was an outstanding event, and those that missed it, you missed a good one.
That was March seventh. In case you don't know, Maryland Print House is started by a couple of young guys right out of this area, and just north of town, just north of Pipers, they have a little business there, so. Very exciting.
Very good. Councilman Walder?
Okay, at last month's, uh, planning and zoning meeting, we only had one action, and that were planners for the development of the Burwiger property, which is at the intersection of Westminster Street and Park Avenue. They want to develop that right near the Stockade. So, they just came in to give us a very informal presentation of what they would like to do. Uh, planning and zoning expressed some concerns. They took that back. They want to come back again, uh, at the next meeting to present changes again. The meeting was going to be next week, but it was moved up to tomorrow night, so we're going to have that. And again, it's very informal. They'll just kind of address some of the concerns we have. And as Steve had mentioned, we also have architects for the number-one north, um, development coming in to talk about some concerns we had with, uh, construction moving forward with changes that were not approved by planning and zoning. So, they're going to come in and address those changes, and again, we'll look at that, so. Those are two things for tomorrow night.
The Burwiger property is like R fifteen.
Was it R ten?
R ten.
It's R ten. Just the way that, that their design was, have one way in and it doesn't leave. The fact that on high streets, there's no entrance into this area, the stormwater management right on the, the front at Westminster Street, Park Avenue, and the fact that it would be difficult for emergency vehicles to get in, turn around. It was just a lot of little concerns, shapes of the properties, the number of properties. So, they took that back, and they're going to come back and present new ideas.
I wonder, I'm just spitballing here, if like, something mixed-use would work over there? Like, if it was fewer properties, but it was mixed-use, so therefore it'd be better, I don't even know if we could even change the zoning on it, or if they would entertain that?
It's been probably five to eight years ago now. We had Hanover Hospital looking at it for a, a outpatient clinic.
Yeah.
And, um, that fell through the board of directors, didn't feel that it was enough, uh, patients in the area to support, to support that. I mean, that would have been, you know, low impact to, to the community, and it would be a, a good asset to the community, but their board didn't, didn't like that. So, something like that would have worked out, too. A little mixed-use there, so, but, uh, yeah. I, I believe Councilperson Wa, I think it was a thirty-one homes?
Somewhere around there. There was a couple different options because of access to High Street. And again, there's one big giant loop, almost like a circle, but it stops dead of coming back out on the Westminster Street.
Right. Was it all, was it only in and out, all Westminster?
Yes.
Yes, it didn't, right.
Which was probably-
They didn't want to do anything on High Street because they didn't want, the way the properties would all go up at High Street, they didn't want any a, access from that. Backyard access, they called it.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, more, more to come on that, I guess. All right, Trent?
Uh, starting off athletics, we had two members of the varsity wrestling team placed in the state wrestling tournament, as well as someone received top honors at the Carroll County Powerlifting Meet. And swing sports are finally starting off with meet, uh, coach night being tomorrow night. And heading into fine arts, the Manchester Valley Vocal Ensemble received the highest score in qualified for states after performing last Wednesday. And the band, the Wind Ensemble, performed today and are waiting to see what they received. Uh, the senior-directed one acts, uh, are this, not this Friday and Saturday, uh, Friday and Saturday in late March, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, as well as April fifth and sixth. And for the third and final time, the Business Expo is this Saturday from nine to two. At, yeah, from the SGA. That's all.
All right. Very good. Uh, so we had planned on having a budget work session tonight. We're, we're not doing, we're not doing that, because we had a couple people that couldn't make it. We wanted to include them, so we'll, we'll get that rescheduled. And, uh, next council meeting is April night. Anything else for this board?
Monday night, Tria Friends, six-thirty.
We'll be here.
We'll be here.
All right. Um, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Favors, aye.
Aye.
All right, goodnight.